We shall start in one minute. Shall we brother?
Yes, I think we can start with the.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Robbi alaamin. Wassalamu ala sharafil ambiayi wal mursulim. Nabiyan Muhammad wa ala ali wasahbi ya jma'in. Robbi shrahi thadri wa yathir li amri wa ala al-aktatam min lisanii yafqahu qoli. The distinguished guests, brothers and sisters, colleagues. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. And a very good day to all of you joining us from Bahrain, the GCC in particular, and from other parts of the world. We hope Insha Allah you and your families are keeping well. Welcome to one of the most important event at AOFI which we have usually for our, as part of our standards development process, a public hearing session, which is generally a public consultation event where we seek comments, feedback on standards that we are about to finalize. So it's a very important stage within the standards development process here at AOFI. And we, we hope these sessions, we, we benefit from these sessions where we receive expert opinions, comments and feedback on the standards that is presented and that is made available for public consultation on our website as well. Today's event is with regards to AOFI Financial Accounting Standards. And we are presenting to you two important standards, one on financial reporting for Islamic financial, financial reporting for Islamic financial services offered by conventional financial institutions or Islamic windows and interim financial reporting. So these are two important standards that have been approved by the, the, the AOFI Accounting Board for a public consultation stage. And we have already completed two events on this. One was in Arabic and the other one was in English, in particular for the Southeast Asia region. Today's event is focused on, on the GCC region and we are glad to have the support of Bahrain Association of Banks as well as Central Bank of Bahrain as well as other institutions whom I would like to name for this event. And we, we are glad to receive the support as well as the colleagues from this institution. We have received the registration for about, of about 300 people. And we are hoping the rest should join in very soon. So like any public hearing session, there will be no presentation that will be shared. The, the, the documents have already been made available on our website and they will, the links for those will be shared in the chat window at the bottom of your screen. Please do use the question and answers tab instead of the chat window for your question answers. And, and please try and be, make it as interactive as possible. Today's session is, is rather a shorter session. It's from now on till eleven, eleven o'clock Bahrain time, which is GMT plus three. And you know, of course, we, as I said, there will be no presentation that will be made available. The, the presentation that is being shared is actually from the exposure draft itself. So without any further ado, let me hand it over to the secretary general of AOFI, Mr. Umar Mustafa Ansari to take you through the standards. Over to brother.
Thank you very much brother Ismaan. A'udzubillahiminashshataanirradhim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Bishrahli sadri, bayasteli amri, bahlu al-aktatam min lisanii yafqahu qoli. Ladies and gentlemen, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. And good morning, good afternoon, good evening depending on from where you are joining us. And thank you for joining in a, in a large number already and the registration as brother Ismaan has mentioned is for even larger groups. Insha Allah we hope that more people will be joining. As brother Ismaan mentioned, we have a short time because we are going to discuss today very short two standards. These are not very detailed standards. And not too many things actually are there to, to discuss in detail. One is about the windows, the accounting for Islamic finance windows or windows of conventional financial institutions offering Islamic financial services. And the second one is on interim financial reporting. So roughly we will allocate nearly one hour for the, for the first standard that is the windows standard. And nearly half hour without a break because it's already a short session for the second one. The, the, the standards are open for comments. So you can, you can provide your comments in, in writing also. But now particularly the windows standard after this public hearing, we are going to conclude it. So if you have any comments that you can provide today or otherwise if you can send them in writing as soon as possible in a day or two, those will be entertained and incorporated. Because towards the end of the month, we are going to have our accounting board meeting in which this standard, the fin windows standard, which is the revision of FAS 18 will be finalized. With regard to the interim, surely the comments can be provided in due course. So without any, any, any further, further discussion on the standard setting process, most of you I could see very quickly, I can see some very familiar names. Welcome to all of you again. And I feel that from, from the perspective of AOFI, it is very clear that standard setting is not the process. Yet that can be done within a, within a board room or by, 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 by desk researchers. Actually, the, it, the equally important part of it is market interaction and taking input from the maximum market sources. So from that perspective, this public hearing is very important. And we hope that, that we will be able to get useful comments today that we can incorporate in the funded version of the standard. This standard, as I mentioned, is a revision of FAS 18. FAS 18 standard was already there and we, we have gone through, most of you who are familiar with AOFI's recent activities must be aware that nearly three years back you've initiated and nearly two years back we concluded an exercise for FAS revision. And we conducted a survey for all possible phases that need a revision and took comments, generally comments with regard to what are the main aspects and the standards were put into our priority list according to that. That, that is more important, the standards were incorporated as soon as possible. Whereas in the, in the plan for AAB, AOFI Accounting Board, and most of them are completed. Now we are picking the standards which were, which were in the priority means that they were important to be revised, but the level of urgency was not that much. So considering this now, this is one of those standards which is now under a limited scope revision or, or a, or a partial revision. Means that the overall main concept of the standard remain more or less the same, but there is improvement with regard to the overall content. Now what are the core improvements? Let me identify. The first thing is that we are aligning this standard with our new framework and new FAS one. Most of you are aware that last year AOFI revised our, our framework of accounting and financial reporting. And as a part of the same project, financial accounting standard number one was also revised. Financial accounting standard number one was issued as exposure draft two times and has gone through our whole exercise. Now in the upcoming meeting, Insha Allah, there were, it was, it was in principle, sort of approved earlier, but there were some minor issues which needed further, further discussion and mainly based on the public hearing comments and the comments received during the exposure stage. So those comments are being incorporated and hopefully, but before the end of the year, FAS one will be issued. So this standard has alignment with the new FAS one and the new framework of AOFI. The second important change is that this standard was developed and, and drafted in the old AOFI's formatting. So the formatting and the writing style has been aligned with the new formatting and new writing style. There was one, one, one op, option in the earlier standard that if there is a, only one product being offered by, by a conventional institution, how to account for it? We believe that this is not the right way of doing business, means that Islamic finance should not be based on a single product. Even if a conventional institution wants to, wants to introduce Islamic finance product, it should segregate all assets, liabilities for the equity related to the Islamic finance operations. We have given it a term called virtual, virtual window, which means that even if you are not having a licensed window, having dedicated branches, et cetera, still there has to be, there has to be a sort of, a sort of segregation of assets, liabilities in form of virtual window. And that virtual window should, shall follow the accounting and financial reporting requirements as contained in this standard. There is one more progress at AOFI's end. AOFI and IFSB are developing a combined Sharia governance framework, joint Sharia governance framework. Insha Allah you will be seeing a exposure draft very soon. It has gone through a lot of internal processes of both standard setting organizations till now. And now it's due for issuance of the exposure draft. And Insha Allah before end of the, end of this year, you will see exposure draft of that. There is a, there is a chapter in that one. So the AOFI Governance Board also wanted to issue a governance standard, but then it was decided that, that at an initial stage it will be a chapter in the joint standard. So that joint standard also addresses some of the issues. However, the earlier windows standard that is FAS 18 had a few governance related requirements, where it is some rise governance related requirements like having a Sharia, Sharia society board, et cetera. It was decided that earlier AOFI was developing standards as a, as a, as, as you know, now we are doing it in five screens. Accounting, auditing, governance, Sharia ethics. However, earlier there were a lot of overlapping. So our earlier accounting standards had a lot of Sharia, Sharia issues discussed therein. Similarly, at times there were some governance issues addressed there. So it was decided that governance issues will be, will be removed from the standard itself. Rather, it will be a disclosure requirement as to what, what sort of governance framework is being followed by the window. And now AOFI's stance is that windows shall be subject to more or less the similar governance requirements. Our definition of Islamic financial institution includes a, a window of a conventional financial institution. It means that all AOFI governance standards are applicable on that. However, the proportionality because not a professionality requirement, that is at a lot of places we mentioned that the requirements of the governance standard shall be applicable. Consider, considering the, considering the nature and size, relative nature and size of operations of the, of the, of the Islamic financial institution. So it applies on windows also that they, there might be a little bit flexibility. Now more details are defined in the, of the governance side in the new upcoming governance stand, joint governance standards. So we do not want to, to, to mix up accounting with the governance requirements. So as I mentioned, this standard includes only a disclosure with regard to what governance framework is being followed. And if a known governance framework is not being followed, then a brief about what governance framework is there is required to be disclosed. Other than that, the requirements are brought in close to, close to the accounting part only. With regard to, these are the main changes, but obviously when I take you through the standard, there might be other minor changes as well. So with that, I will skip the PR section, preface section and the introduction section as I have, I have briefed you about these. So the only thing is that this will, this will, just to mention that this will supersede the earlier standard number 18. And it will be, it will, the name is also changed. The earlier, the, the name is, the approach of the standard is also slightly changed with regard to allowing or preferring a full version of financial statements for Islamic window if the relative size of the window is, is big. Big in, in comparison of the conventional part of the same institution or, or big in, 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 in relation to the overall Islamic finance industry in the respective country. I'll discuss in touch upon this issue when we go through the standard. So do we have any comments on the introduction rationale and preface part?
No questions brother?
Okay, okay. I can see a few in chat, but these are not questions. And that is a request that was made by brother Ismaan already. That if you have a comment or a question, please put it in the Q app so that we can easily access. Even if you want to mention, to, 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 to present your comment by yourself, then please raise hand. We will be giving you an opportunity subject to time availability. So with that coming to the body text of the standard, let me take you through the objective and scope. The objective of this standard is to establish financial reporting requirements for, for Islamic financial services offered by conventional financial institutions. The standard shall be applicable to all conventional financial institutions providing Islamic financial services through an Islamic finance window, provided that such institutions opt to apply the standard in its entirety. See paragraph five and six, because we are talking about in five and six, I'll take you through. This standard shall not be applicable where a conventional financial institution is merely managing Sharia compliant investment funds without constituting an Islamic finance window. Such an institution shall follow the requirements of FAS 14 investment funds in respect of each of its funds for financial reporting purposes. Be to a specific, to a special purpose vehicle or virtual supo entity which is subject to financial reporting under FAS 34. So this is, this is the exclusion and the reason for exclusion is that these, these funds and virtual supo entity and the supo SPV are already subject to full financial reporting requirements according to the respective standards. And hence, we need to identify, we need to identify, identify the institution as a conventional institution and only the respective funds and the products or the instruments are Sharia compliant. But since these are subject to the reporting requirement already, hence the reporting requirement will not be there on the institution itself. Unless, unless there is a conventional institution that makes a window separately to operate these activities, only in that situation, it will be subject to, subject to the requirements of this standard. Just one thing to note, FAS 14 investment funds is already an issue, but right now AOFI is going through an improvement process for this standard as well. Now coming to some important definitions, I'll, I'll, I'll take you through the important ones. Convention financial institution is a financial institution performing banking, insurance, capital markets and or similar activities that has no explicit statement by virtue of a license and or by defined objectives in its constitution documents to comply with the Sharia principles and rules in entirety. So they can, they can have the Islamic finance window, but they cannot be called Islamic financial institutions because they do not follow the Sharia principles and rules in entirety. Islamic finance windows are reporting may be virtually nature entity comprising the Islamic financial services offered by conventional financial institution through standalone branches and or divisions. Explanation an Islamic finance window may be formed in compliance with Sharia principles and rules with or without any legal or regulatory requirements. See paragraph six. Sharia principles and rules is the hierarchy of Sharia principles and rules which is defined in AOFI's multiple standards already. I do not want to go in detail for that, but in a nutshell, it comprises of AOFI Sharia standard, the jurisdictions, regulators, Sharia compliance regulations, Sharia related regulations. The rulings of central Sharia board were applicable, the requirements of applicable AOFI financial accounting standards. The rulings of central Sharia board were applicable, the requirements of applicable A O P financial coming standards with regard to the Sharia related requirements and approvals and rulings given by Sharia supervisory board of the institution. So these are the, these are the sources for determining Sharia principles and rules for an institution in the sequence and hierarchy as provided here. Any comments on definitions? We, I can see a question in the, in the Q A box. Uh but uh this is Mazafar John Isam Dinoff. Uh how will it be possible to establish an Islamic window without certain proper I T system in order to segregate the funds from conventional tanks funds? Uh brother Mazafar, uh this is a very good question, very good comment, but we need to understand two things brother. Uh with regard to keeping funds separate, we are very clear. With regard to keeping accounting separate, we are very clear. But with regard to segregation of funds and regarding to having an I T system, these are governance requirements. These are not accounting requirements. Accounting standard would define how accounting should be done and how financial statements should be prepared and presented. On the other hand, yeah, on the other hand, if you see that uh, that even the segregation of funds is a, is a, is a requirement which is coming from the governance side. So from A O P's perspective, we have three independent boards, Sharia board, accounting board, governance board. Our accounting board and your governance board, whatever standards they develop are also subject to a review from the Sharia perspective by a committee of the Sharia board and if there is a major issue, it is taken to the Sharia board. So in a nutshell, uh in a nutshell, we believe that we need to keep our segregation in the standard with regard to the scope of the standard and that's why we have not mentioned about the I T system and these things here. We don't have a disagreement with you on this part, only point is that these requirements are covered in the, in the A O P's uh A O P and I F S B's joint uh governance standard, which has a chapter on Islamic windows. So it is going to be covered there Insha Allah. Uh your point is well noted, it's a very good point. We will see, I think we have already mentioned about segregation of accounting records, but anything else which is needed, we will do that Insha Allah. Your second question brother, if the Islamic window is within the conventional bank, not an independent legal entity, it will be very difficult without I T system. Uh again, no disagreement on this part brother. Either the accounting system of the core entity should be able to segregate everything properly or there should be a separate accounting system, we don't have a disagree, uh a full I T system, not only accounting. The whole core banking and other modules should be separate, we don't have a disagreement. Actually, I can mention to you that in the, the words, uh the wording used in the upcoming standard is that a window should operate like an institution within an institution. Means that even if it's not a separate legal entity, but it should completely function as a separate institution like a separate bank or a successful entity. So we don't have a disagreement brother, only thing, as I mentioned, it's about whether this requirement needs to be put in in the accounting standard or need to be put in the governance standard. So we have decided to put it in the governance standard. Brother Adnan Shafi has a question here in the context of para four B, para six, P C five and P C seven. If a conventional F I which is offering Islamic products and tries to get away with the standard requirements and accordingly does not allocate or has no dedicated Sharia compliant liability cause equity or equity, does that mean relaxation is given to conventional F I that if they do not want to apply this standard and they should not allocate dedicated equity to Islamic products? Uh brother Adnan, uh let's go through the wording again when we read those paragraphs. But in a nutshell, uh in a nutshell, it's other way around. Uh means that as A O P, we do not want to allow any conventional institution to do something like this. Uh but this is an accounting standard, we cannot say it's not allowed to do. We, we, we will only say that, for example, if you go to the financial statements of any company or a bank, you will see that in the beginning there is a note of a statement of compliance. We says that, that this complies completely with I F R S. Or in our case, it complies completely with A O P phases. And we have put this requirement in our FAS one and framework that if you comply with our requirements completely, only then you can claim that you comply with FAS. So our, our, our objective, we can go to that wording and we can see if that wording is creating a confusion uh in your mind like what you have mentioned, so we can improve that wording. But from our perspective, it's other way around, it's that institutions are not allowed to do it. But this, since it is not a regulatory standard or not a governance standard, it's not a governance standard or regulatory standard, so hence it should not be address, uh, 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 addressing this issue in that manner, rather it's just about presenting. So we are saying you cannot present yourself like that, because it's a presentation standard, it's the financial reporting standard. We cannot say we are not regulator, so we cannot say you cannot do it. We are not the governance standard setting board, right now we are talking about a different board, so it's not a governance standard setting board. So we cannot say that. But if the wording provided in this standard is creating a confusion in your mind, uh when we reach that stage, we will request you brother to suggest us better wording or even you can send the wording in writing uh that you want to suggest. However, in a nutshell, in our view, if an institution goes and says, oh, we have this Muraba product or any one single product, while we do not have a separate segregation of everything, we do not want to consider it as, as an acceptable option to be applying, uh for applying A O P's standards. Which means, we believe they are not compliant at all. Only offering one-sided product and a single product is not something acceptable. So uh the point that you raised, if it is being created because of some confusion in wording, uh we need to improve that wording, for that purpose, thanks for raising this issue brother. Do we have any other questions? Uh before we move ahead, okay. Okay, now coming to the financial reporting requirements, a conventional financial institution having an Islamic finance window shall opt either of the following financial reporting models in despite of Islamic finance window. A, providing a complete set of financial statement of the Islamic finance window in line with relevant A O P phases, considered to be a preferred treatment where the quantitative size of the Islamic finance window is relatively significant, either in perspective of the overall size of the institution or Islamic finance industry of the relevant institution. So quick examples are that if, for example, there is a institution like we know N C B Al Ahli in Saudi. Uh Saudi doesn't adopt our standard, but I'm just giving you an example that more than fifty percent of total assets liabilities and nearly eighty percent plus of retail business is Sharia compliant. So, so in that situation, we prefer that in the relative size, even I think that if it is more than twenty to thirty percent, again, we did not specify specific percentage which can be specified by a different regulators in the country, uh according to, according to their judgment on that part. But if it is material, then it must be a complete set of financial statements according to A O P phases. Second option, it is not like you know twenty or thirty percent, but it is, maybe it is ten percent. But even that ten percent is, 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 is the largest or second largest in the overall context of the country's Islamic banking industry. We have good examples of this in form of like in Bank Mastat Mitha, in Oman. We have example of H P L Islamic banking in Pakistan where the size of the Islamic Islamic window within the bank as a proportion of the bank's total assets or liabilities or the total size of balance sheet might be ten percent, not more than fifteen percent or less than that. But from the, in the context of the country or the jurisdiction, that has a significant size. So maybe Bank Mastat Mitha is still is the largest Islamic finance, uh financial institution, even if it's just a window. It's not a full-fledged institution, but it's larger than full-fledged institution. Same may apply to H P L or N C B or some others. So in a nutshell, uh if the, if the, if, if in the context of the institution or in the context of the country's Islamic finance industry, the size, the size of the window is material, then it should be, uh it should be uh following as a preferred treatment, following a full set of financial statements. Uh if this does not apply, then, then a condensed set of financial statements for the Islamic finance window in accordance with the requirements of this standard, which will be including a limited, again, the A O P phases still need to be followed with regard to this, this, uh this, this accounting, accounting policy selection, all the treatments. But the, the minimum requirement will be that there should be, uh that there should be a minimum set of financial statements, a condensed set of financial statements presented. A conventional financial institution may offer Islamic financial service on a standalone basis without having separate branches, divisions or windows. In such cases, if the group of similar Islamic financial service transactions constitute identifying Sharia compliant assets on one hand and identifiable Sharia compliant liabilities cause equity and equity on the other hand, that the conventional financial institution shall consider such group of similar transactions and balances to be in the nature of virtual Islamic finance window and shall apply the requirements of the standard in respect of such Islamic finance window. The requirements however shall not be applicable in the case of absence of a dedicated Sharia compliant cause equity or equity allocated against identified Sharia compliant assets. Uh brother Adnan, uh I, I can, I can, I can feel what you wanted to refer here in paragraph six. And I believe that this wording might need some improvement and clarification. The intention of the wording is very clear, that if you do not segregate it, you are not a proper window and if you are not a window, you cannot follow this one. This is something that is the crux of this standard, however, the wording here need to be clarified from that perspective. I don't have a disagreement on this part and I believe when we were discussing it with the Sharia committee, even the Sharia committee's review of this standard is not complete and we are intending to complete it as soon as possible. But still, I think one member of the Sharia committee was also having the confusion with regard to the choice of words here. So I agree with you that here the wording needs to be improved in line with your, your observation and in line with the observation by our Sharia committee member. I can see another Q A, uh another question in Q A, brother Mahmud Tahiri. That disclosure should be part of the financial statement with create an issue with the audit opinion on the financial statement being issued according to different accounting standards. Better to be attached to the financial statements, not part of it. Brother Mahmud, thank you very much, an excellent comment. However, this is not an auditing standard, so now let's again, A O P develops auditing standards separately. It is an excellent comment brother, I don't have a disagreement on this part. But, but when we do the financial reporting requirements, we do not, we do it from the u, from the user's perspective, not from the auditor's perspective, which means that we believe that a full set of financial statements or even a condensed set of financial statements in like align with A O P's accounting standards is needed. Now the question will be whether there should be a separate audit requirement on this set? Because when the, when the consolidated financial statements are prepared by the, by the uh by the, by the conventional institution, it, it, it may consolidate them according to the accounting policies used by the, by the conventional institution itself. So it may change some of the treatments or it may, it may change the classification of such, some items. It may change the, the treatment of some items and again, we are not bound for that. So we, we, it is not our responsibility as A O P. Our responsibility lies still the part of the institution that is the, that is institution within the institution as I refer to the governance standard. So this is a very important comment, but I believe that right now A O P is in the process of having a very comprehensive study of revision of its auditing standards and aligning them with the new ISAs and aligning some other requirements with the governance standards. So I believe that this might be a very important point that we may need to discuss from the auditing perspective. Uh the point, but, but practically the point is fully, fully, fully agreed that yes, there is an issue with the auditor, I have been auditor by most of my life. So I can understand that as auditor, my opinion will be impacted, but to be honest, as auditor of the conventional institution, my opinion will be based on the accounting policies and treatments of the conventional institution. So, so how the financial statements of the window are integrated in the financial statements of the conventional institution is not my, uh sorry to say, not my headache. Uh and not my, even again, it's not the issue that I want to run away from it by saying that not my headache, rather it's not my scope. I'm not as, uh I'm doing a standard setting for Islamic financial institutions. So I'm not responsible or I'm, it's not in my scope and mandate to develop accounting for the for the, for the conventional side. To be honest, actually we wanted one or two disclosures on the conventional side and the accounting board discussed and said that we cannot require any disclosure on the conventional side. A regulator may require it, but we cannot require it because our scope and mandate is not towards the conventional side. So we wanted one or two disclosures which were, uh which were decided by the board not to be included in this standard. Uh because our scope ends here. So brother Mahmud, hundred percent agreed with your comment, let's see how we can address it. Again, uh actually the disclosure that we wanted was that we wanted the conventional to disclose the, the reconciliation between the balances and appearing in the uh in the window accounts versus how they are integrated and, and, and adjusted in the conventional account. So we wanted a reconciliation, but the point was by the, by our accounting board, it was decided that this reconciliation is part of the conventional financial statement, so it's out of his scope for us. While I personally believe, brother Adnan is here, I don't know who other are here from the regulatory perspective. I personally believe that from the regulator's perspective, it might still be useful that regulators should ask the conventional institutions to disclose as to how they integrate the Islamic window financial statements in their accounts and we, and provide a reconciliation as to which balances have been reclassified and which balances have been adjusted because of the different accounting policies being used. Uh in a nutshell brother, uh again, your comment is appreciated, we will take it to the auditing, auditing committee. Sister Farida if you can note it down and forward it to the auditing, auditing team that is already working on this one. I think Sister Madjan might be here as well, she's already working on that. So we can, we can note these points for the auditing part, thanks again. And now coming to brother Mahmud, your second comment, it is about uh the practice of Sharia compliant assets are financed by current account, this means the standard will not be applicable to these institutions. Brother Mahmud, we are saying that you need to segregate, if you are saying that it is part, it is being funded by the current accounts, it means that you need to segregate that, uh you need to allocate equity uh asset liability, even if you want to show it as a payable to the conventional institution, still you can do that. If you receive it, if, if, if the conventional has current accounts and can, if those current accounts are passed on to, to, to carry on this uh this Islamic finance operation, uh in that situation, what we are saying that you, you, you need to uh create a virtual window, which means that the assets and liabilities will be there. So that the asset would be, uh the whatever assets are there like supo or any other assets and the liability would be payable to the conventional and conventional is funding this payable to the conventional from those current accounts. So uh if the Sharia board is okay with that and again, that is a governance issue, not my issue. But if the Sharia board is okay with that, then this, this is eligible to be called a virtual window. And in that situation, that virtual window will follow this financial, this financial reporting requirements. So the issue of allocation is there, as I, as I already mentioned to brother Adnan's comment, that I believe that the wording in paragraph six needs improvement. Thank you again for a very good comment brother. Then we have brother Hamid Hikmaney. Uh separate audit statement should be necessary, Islamic finance has halal, compliance dealings and this must be audited separately. Thank you very much brother, according to our standards, the Sharia audit is already required of the window separately because Sharia audit is applicable on Islamic financial institutions and Islamic financial institutions include Islamic finance windows. So the new governance standard and the old governance standard and the Sharia audit standard which is auditing standard number six, they all actually cover that part. So from our perspective, the Sharia audit is necessary. Now the question that I, I have taken as a note is financial audit of these financial statements. I think, uh again, uh let me mention one more thing again about scope. We will mention it, but we will have to mention it very carefully because auditing standards do not mandate an audit to be conducted. It is the regulation or the governance standards that require an audit to be conducted. Auditing standards are about how an audit needs to be conducted. So auditing standards don't say that every year there should be an audit. Auditing standards say that if an audit is there, these Auditing standards say that if an audit is there, these are the requirements. So that is what we are going to cover, that if the audit of the window financial statements is being conducted, these are the requirements and specific considerations. So either it will be a separate auditing standard or a chapter within, within our audit, revised auditing standard number one. Uh, so, and so we have, but, but the governance standards may include a, a, a requirement that there should be a periodic audit of financial statements of the Islamic finance window. So this is something that, again, uh, you might be saying that, okay, it's all A O P, this is governance board, this is auditing board and this is, uh, this is accounting board. But, but we have to be very careful about these things because there is a different set of regulators and different set of jurisdictions that have actually adopted our standard. So we have to be very careful about keeping a distinction and line between these sets of the standard. Uh, thank you again, brother. Uh, we take it as an important comment and you forward it to the auditing and governance side. Brother Mahmud Darwish has a point that if we apply the point six, may it, may if effect on the reputation of the Islamic windows because the customer may be confused from where there is no separation between the Islamic and conventional funds. Brother Mahmud Darwish, my quick answer is if there is no segregation, then it should not be called Islamic. And that's why we are saying that we do not want anybody to say, we do not segregate, but we follow A O P standard. Which means that sort of A O P is legitimizing this type of practice. We do not want to legitimize this type of practice. Only thing is that we need to improve the choice of words here to make it more clear. Thank you very much, brother, for your kind comment and we'll, we'll take it to the board as necessary. Okay. So now, uh, thank you for very good comments on this paragraph six. Let us move, uh, to paragraph seven. An Islamic finance window shall select and apply the accounting policies in respect of recognition, measurement and reporting of its operations separately from the conventional operations in line with the hierarchy of selection of accounting policies as described in paragraph seven of A O P conceptual framework. This hierarchy is actually the, the, you need to apply the applicable fas. If applicable fas is not there, then a similar fas needs to be applied, then you can refer to, uh, I F R S. But A O P conceptual framework and Sharia cannot be compromised on that. I F R S are the generally accepted accounting principles in your, on, in your jurisdiction. So in a nutshell, this hierarchy means that you need to follow the A O P conceptual framework and you need to follow the A O P financial accounting standards. For the purpose of selection and application of accounting policies, the materiality shall be determined with reference to the quantitative data of Islamic window finance window only and the qualitative characteristics of Islamic financial services offered. So we, we want to be very clear that since the institution may be, the conventional institution may be much larger. So the Islamic window need to have financial reporting considering the materiality at a lower scale. So it means that the quantitative data of Islamic window only will be used to determine materiality. And the qualitative materiality factors will be determined based on the Islamic financial services offered, the, the characteristics which are there. In a nutshell, uh, the conventional may have a larger materiality, that materiality will not apply on the, on the Islamic window. Because according to that materiality, lot of activities of Islamic finance window may become immaterial. So we do not want those to be ignored. Rather, we are saying you need to apply materiality completely separately. So it means that this set of financial statements will be completely independent from the conventional financial reporting set. Presentations and disclosure. An Islamic finance window shall select and apply the accounting policies in respect of recognition, measurement, uh, separately from conventional operations in line with that hierarchy. And this, I think there is a, uh, Ricky, um, I think there is an issue here. Let me, if you allow me to just check in the standard. Can you see the screen? My apologies for this. There was a typo error here. Islamic finance window shall present a set of primary financial statements in line with the requirements of paragraph twenty-three, twenty-five of fas one, read with other relevant phases along with selected nodes to the financial statements, et cetera. In a nutshell, the, the, the main primary statements which are there, that is the statement of financial position, the income statement, the other comprehensive income statement, if there is any, the statement of quasi-equity, et cetera. So actually, uh, actually, uh, or in case of, in case of a Takaful window, you have to refer to the respective Takaful window. Uh, with the relevant phases, which means that you have to refer to the new Takaful standard, which is also towards finalization. So, uh, so in a nutshell, the, the, even the condensed set of financial statement will comprise of the primary financial statement set, et cetera, whichever is there. So although it is, it is going to be a shorter one, but it's, it's not going to be a full set of like thirty, forty pages. But still the primary statements and selected notes and the important accounting policies, et cetera, have to be there. This, this, in this set of financial statements will actually provide a confirmation that this is, uh, this is in line with A O P's account, financial accounting standard, uh, num- and number eighteen, revised number eighteen, uh, in its entirety, which means that there are no exceptions created to that. You cannot say that we are having a mixed accounting policies, half coming from conventional, half coming from here, uh, with regard to the main, main treatments, et cetera. Now, this is one very important governance requirement related disclosure that an Islamic finance window shall make an explicit statement with regard to governance framework applicable thereon. For example, the requirements of A O P governance standards or the country regulation, regulators like Bahrain, you can say that we are following the, 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 the governance framework of Bahrain or Oman or whatever governance framework you are using, you need to mention that. And a brief of Sharia governance structure in absence of an established governance framework. So if you are operating in a country and you are not adopting A O P governance standards, then still you need to provide a minimum brief about the Sharia governance structure, uh, whether you have a Sharia board and Sharia compliance, Sharia internal audit, Sharia external audit function, whatever functions you have, you need to provide a brief about that. However, if you follow A O P governance standard, you can just mention that we follow the A O P governance standards, which means that you are, you are going to follow all these requirements. It shall also disclose if it applies a set of Sharia principles and rules different from those defined in this standard, duly considering the hierarchy effort therein. This is very important point that if there is a, there is a Islamic finance window, but that does not follow A O P Sharia standards or any other item appearing in the hierarchy of Sharia principles and rules as defined in this standard, then, then they should also disclose because this is very important for the users to know that which set of financial, which set of Sharia principles and rules they are following. Are they following A O P Sharia standards and other relevant principles or not? I can see a question is there. So let me take this question from brother Mahmud Tahiri. The disclosure from para eleven to twelve shall be applicable to institution choosing to disclose condensed financial statement. It is not clear, but I'm assuming it will not, otherwise it will be condensed. Uh, brother Mahmud, uh, thank you very much. Your comment is, uh, uh, answer is yes. Uh, let me, let me take you through the, uh, the wording where we refer to it. If you, if you, if you see, here we said in, in paragraph number five, that either you follow A or you follow B. When you follow, you follow all the requirements. When you follow B, you follow all the requirements of this standard. If you follow A, if you follow A, uh, then then these paragraphs from seven, uh, uh, let me mention, seven, eight, seven and eight are applicable on all. While this one, the presentation, minimum presentation requirements is applicable on, uh, from nine onwards, these are applicable on, hmm, on, uh, the, the condensed one. Now, it is coming to my mind from your question, brother. It's good that it came to my mind that we need to be more clear with regard to what are the minimum requirements which should be applicable on both sides, whether you are following the full set or a condensed set, what are there which shall be applied by all. In my understanding, the accounting policy part applies to all. Uh, this disclosure with regard to, uh, the, 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 this, this, this disclosure required, required with regard to uh, twelve, uh, for the general disclosures, minimum disclosure, this may apply to all. So this has to be more clear. Brother Mahmud, uh, thank you for your kind comment. We will just towards finalization, we'll, we'll check and make sure. Sister Farida, if you can kindly note it. We need to be very clear about what are the disclosure requirements that apply to all windows? And what are the disclosure requirements which apply to, uh, the windows which are the subject to condensed financial statement only. So thanks for your comment, brother. I, I can feel myself that people may be confused on this part. So we need to write it very clearly where we decided about this, uh, option of choosing of the functions. Uh, this, uh, this one, paragraph five. I think in paragraph five, when we allow providing a complete set, here we need to clarify which paragraphs of this standard will still apply. So the remaining part applies on B. Thanks again, brother. So let's continue where we were. We were on paragraph ten, we discussed and general disclosure requirement to eleven. Now coming to paragraph twelve, that these, these are the bullet points or the list of items that should be disclosed. In addition to general disclosure requirements of relevant phases that are considered material for Islamic finance window. So whatever is material from the respective fas that shall still be applicable, but these are the minimum requirements which have to be there. Uh, this first is about non-compliant transactions. You need to identify any non-compliant transactions and assets, et cetera. But there is an additional requirement, uh, including funds and assets pertaining to Islamic finance window being commingled with the funds pertaining relating to Sharia, uh, conventional operations along with the movement thereof during the period and as to how such non-compliance has been or will be resolved. So this is a very specific requirement with regard to segregation of funds. The legal and regulatory status, uh, deficit about capital solvency and accumulated losses, uh, to be covered by Islamic window. This is a very important requirement. Number of physical branches, uh, related being part of Islamic window and other means and mediums offering said services. Disclosure of Sharia non-compliant income or expenses related to Islamic windows and a description of how such income has been or will be separated and disposed. Significant accounting policies for the window only. Uh, only when these are different from the conventional institutions, overall accounting policies or are specific to Islamic finance window. So, so property plan and equipment or some other general accounting policies may remain similar to the conventional one. So you do not need to repeat them in the condensed one. However, uh, the policies which are specific to Islamic finance window, that is the, those policies which are related to Islamic finance operations, et cetera, are to be, um, are to be, uh, identified in line with A O P phases and disclosed. Disclosure with regard to risks faced by the Islamic finance window in line with that requirements of this, uh, including in particular requirements relating to capital adequacy and solvency, et cetera, as applicable. Any guarantees undertaking pledge or charges on any of the form of non-managed financial support provided by or to the Islamic finance window to or from the conventional operations or shared collectively with each other along with the respective nature of the contract. Placements or investments under different remotes of Islamic mode of from the conventional operations and movement thereof during the period as well as any written thereof and the maturity profile of such transactions. The amount of expenses and cost shared between the Islamic finance window and conventional operations along with nature of particular expense and cost and basis of allocation, et cetera. So these are the disclosure requirements which are very specific to conventional, uh, conventional, uh, institutions, windows and the, and the relationship between the conventional and the window. Effective date is, uh, is recommended to be first January twenty twenty-three. We hope that we will be able to finalize and this issue this standard within this current year because public hearings are also already conducted and hopefully we'll be taking it to the board. So there will be nearly a year's time, exposure draft was issued even earlier. So there will be and nearly a year's time with regard to applicability of this standard. However, if anybody amongst you feel that twenty twenty-two, three will be early, then you can, you can, you can suggest something on that part. So with that, do we have any comments? Any further comments on this standard? I'm very, uh, like happy, uh, uh, we got some very good comments. And I believe that there are some points that can be clarified in a better way. Uh, the choice of wording in paragraph six and with regard to the, uh, with regard to the applicability of which of the paragraphs will be applicable on all, all type of windows, whether opting for full set or for a selected set. And what are the minimum requirements with regard to only, uh, following the, uh, only following this standard means providing a condensed set. So we have to be more clear on that part, I think. And these two comments, uh, I think are going to help us a lot in improving this standard. I can now see another comment in the Q A. Any disclosure required about zakah? Brother, this is a, a good comment, but if you see, we mentioned that, oh, in addition to, if, where, where we, where we started this paragraph twelve, we said, in addition to the, we said in addition, uh, in addition to the general disclosure requirements of relevant phases that are considered material for Islamic finance window. So if zakah is applicable, uh, and it is material. Now again, zakah where it will be applicable? It will be applicable only where zakah is applicable on, uh, on, on equity holders other than, other than the shareholders related to the window only, like for example, quasi-equity. It is not common, but we believe that disclosures of the new zakah standard will be applicable with regard to quasi-equity of this standard also. So, uh, but, but generally speaking, on the shareholders, now existing A O P standard primarily focuses on shareholders. So on the shareholders of a conventional institution, what we are talking about? Conventional institution is already going into a, yeah, into a sin from Sharia perspective. So, so what, what, what is like, you know, what is the, what is the point in having zakah on the conventional institution's shareholders? So to be honest, I am, I, I don't feel that's an issue. However, uh, coming to the window, the quasi-equity and other participatory stakeholders who are within the window, uh, zakah needs to be disclosed with regard to them according to new zakah standard because that requires financial reporting for that part. However, this gives me a good comment from that perspective that maybe either in the zakah standard or in this standard, we need to clarify this part. Uh, sister Farida, if you can note this point because we may need to see either in the zakah standard or in this standard, we need to incorporate a cross deference because for shareholders, it will not be applicable and it will not be legally applicable to be paid. But the disclosure requirements which we have put in in the zakah standard may also need to be covered here. So this is something that we need to, I think we need to do. I can see more comments here now, brother Mahmud Darwish. Can we add a disclosure point about any? Can we add a disclosure point about any regulated rules that forbid applying the Islamic rule of standard when preparing the Islamic window financial statements? Uh brother, when we mentioned that there should be an explicit statement with regard to application of this standard in entirety. We actually do not want to allow room for that. But if there is an exception, this is generally understood, like for example in IFRS, there is a compliance statement. But if for some reason, the compliance is not there and some of the regulatory requirements override the IFRS. In that situation, the compliance statement is subject to a provision. So we believe that the compliance statement that we have required here in paragraph, I think, ten. Yeah, so the compliance statement in this paragraph ten will be will be subject to. Uh subject to a uh to a to a provision here. However, we do not want to write it in this standard clearly. Oh, if you don't do it, then then no, we don't want people to to have this option. However, if it happens for any reason, then it can be done. Sister Farida, if we can. Add this point in the basis of conclusion. That the standard requires explicit statement, but if the local regulation that et cetera is like, you know, override it for any reason. Then that a provision along with the nature should shall be disclosed. Uh and the statement should not be an explicit statement of compliance with this standard. So I think this we we should mention in the basis of conclusion. It's a good point. Thank you very much again, brother. We have comment from from Sunil Akpal. Can there be a cost allocation mechanism identified for regarding reporting and expense separately for conventional Islamic business? For example, in a bank where both conventional are provided to customers salaries, expenses, distribution issue. Again, brother Sunil, I think that the issue from our perspective is that. It's an accounting, it's an accounting standard. An accounting standard means that that how the costs are shared is not my issue. And my issue is disclosure of the mechanism. My issue is not performing the cost allocation. So cost allocation will happen according to the shared services agreement and the service level agreements between the conventional departments and Islamic. And this issue we have at we have tried to address in the upcoming upcoming chapter in the. Sharia Governance Joint Standard by UF and IFSB, Insha Allah, you will find some requirements there which will cover this one. This standard requires primarily only the disclosure and we do not want to go into the mechanism. The mechanism is primarily according to the mutual agreements and disclosure according to this standard. Brother, Nan Shafi, paragraph, this is five, states that a licensed Islamic finance window operation and reporting entity on its own. Can it be included in definition of Islamic window under paragraph four B? Uh thank you, brother Adnan. Very good comment. We'll take it to the working group and board and we'll see whether they want to improve the. Definition here. Thank you very much, brother, for a very good comment. Uh brother Hamid Hikmane, a comment on the accounting, I strongly agree on disclosure of the account accounting. More broadly, the accounting must be on the three aspects, the management side, the beneficiaries and the source. It must be remembered that all halal contributions should be acceptable, that means sources of the fund is important to assess compliance. Thank you very much, brother. We we take a point, we take a note of your point. Uh hopefully, Zaka standard, the new Zaka standard will address what you want to be covered. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have any other comments here? Okay, so as we have limited time, so we move to the next standard now. Okay, now we are coming to the second standard and this is a new standard on interim financial reporting. Let me quickly take you through the rationale for this one and the and the thought process that was behind it. Till now, Islamic financial institutions around the globe are developing developing their and presenting their. Interim financial reports wherever they are required by the regulations or by the. Uh or by the or market norms and practices, they are developing and presenting those standards according to IFRS, that size thirty four. They are actually actually even if they are following the UF's accounting policy, the UF FAS's accounting policies, still they are doing this. This was identified as a gap during the time when we were working on the framework and on financial accounting standard number one. As a revised set of standard. And this was considered whether we should cover it as a as a as a as a small section within the FAS one. Or can or as an appendix to FAS one. But then it was decided that we might need it. Again, we do not want to reinvent the wheel. According to UF's policies, we we do not want to. Uh develop standards in the areas where. IFRS or other generally accepted accounting principles are already there and they don't have a Sharia issue. Or they don't have an issue with regard to the specific treatment of Islamic finance products. We develop standards only where there is value addition. Value addition means either there is a Sharia issue or there is a specific. Islamic finance nature issue like that is there is a Islamic finance transaction whose characteristics are different from the. Conventional transactions and hence it needs to be addressed in a different way. So from that perspective, UF decided that we want to develop this standard. And we want to move with this standard as a as a as a as a complimentary standard. So we do not want to reproduce everything which is there in I I said I said before. But rather, we want to address some important issues and the minimum requirements. So so what was actually happening or what is still happening as of now is that when the interim financial statements are prepared. The institution says that these are prepared according to I thirty four. And while while we want the overall UF's framework to be available with regard to financial reporting. So we decided that this standard will be a short and and crisp standard. It will not reproduce everything, but it will touch upon some important aspects that need to be considered by the those who follow the UF's. Accounting standards. I can see a QA in the QA tab, there is a question, let me see. Okay, I think the question is not complete here. Uh okay, so let's uh let's quickly go through this standard and its main requirements. So this is standard, actually, I I'll skip these these parac- uh these parac- paragraphs. Initial paragraphs, if anybody has a comment, they can provide, but I'll take you through the body text. So we start with the objective of the standard. The objective, this standard sets out the principles for the interim financial reporting for all institutions having adopted UF phases. And should be read with other UF phases and generally accepted accounting principles applicable in relevant jurisdictions. So that is the first part. Again, the standard is accounting standard, so it may not require that what at what interval there should be interim reporting. Rather, we just mentioned that if there is interim reporting, this should be applied. Now, what is the score? Standard applies to institutions required to prepare and publish interim financial reports according to applicable law, directions of the respective. Regulator and or where relevant, the stock exchanges. The standard also applies to the institutions voluntarily lacking to prepare and publish interim financial reports. So either you are required by law or rules or regulations. Or if you are doing it on a voluntary basis, in both situations, you should follow this standard. This is important to ensure consistency in financial reporting. For the purpose of interpreting and applying this standard, the following short definitions are relevant. Interim period is a financial reporting period shorter than a full financial year. Interim financial report means a financial report for an interim period containing either of one. A complete set of financial statements described in FAS one or a set of condensed financial statements as described in this standard. Now, I think the question is the. Okay, this is the same question. So there are only two definitions here. Now, the main principle, the institution shall take guidance from generally accepted accounting principles that are applicable for the purpose of preparation of interim financial reports. Unless a contrary stipulation is prescribed in this standard. So this standard is a short and crisp standard and it has it is like a complimentary standard to IFRS. The institution shall have a choice that interim financial report is prepared. And presented either in accordance with paragraph four B one or four B two, that is a full set or a or a condensed set. Where the institution opts to prepare the interim financial report in accordance with paragraph four B two, it shall prepare such a port in line with paragraph twelve to fourteen of this standard. Applicable requirements for all interim financial reports. So these are the requirements which apply on all interim financial reports, this paragraph eight till 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 eleven. Accounting policies, an institution shall apply the same accounting policies applicable to the previous or annual or financial statements prepared according to UF FAS one. Any change in accounting policy, including a change resulting from adoption of a new FAS, shall be according to the hierarchy of. Selection and application of accounting policies given in part three of FAS one. Such change in accounting policy shall be applied in line with requirements of FAS one in a manner as these are applied for annual financial statements. Other significant considerations. So we believe that these are important considerations that should be considered by all financial interim financial reports. Institution shall identify specific consideration with regard to the applicability of UF phases and the generally accepted accounting principles. Particularly with regard to the minimum disclosures on the interim financial reports, including but not limited to. Application of judgment in making estimates. Assessment of materiality, including quantitative materiality, qualitative materiality. Recognition of losses from impairment of assets and or credit losses. Acquisition and disposal of items of PPE, including any commitments for the same. Settlement of a litigation or a significant change in possible outcome of an ongoing litigation. Correction of prior period errors, changes in business or economic circumstances that affect the fair value of the institution's assets and liabilities. Related party transactions and changes in contingent liabilities and assets. For the first time adoption and institution adopting UF phases for the first time shall consider requirements of paragraph twenty two of FAS thirty six. Because that is a specific situation, so there are some requirements provided in that paragraph, so those will proceed the. Other requirements of FAS one in this standard. Minimum components of an interim condensed financial report, so this is paragraph twelve onwards, which means that this one is applicable if you decide to set. Develop a inter- condensed financial report. Uh paragraph, till paragraph eleven, everything goes applicable on either you have a condensed report or a full report. Both situation, you have to apply all those requirements, but this one will be applicable on. The on the condensed interim function only. So the first is the primary statements in line with UF phases that are applicable in general presentation and disclosure of the institution. Primary statements under UF various phases like FAS one or the Takaful FAS or the or the investment fund FAS, et cetera. These are provided in appendix B. Some of these are subject to revision right now, so they are in the process of revision. So there those will be applicable as whichever is as for the time being enforced. We hope that this standard will be finalized, at least with the with the Takaful standard. So maybe with regard to Takaful's new statements which are being introduced by the Takaful's new exposure drafts. I think that and we hope that these will be these will be incorporated and implemented at the same time. Notes comprising significant changes and changes in accounting policies and other explanation. Including minimum disclosure requirement as per generally accepted accounting principles and relevant regulatory requirements. Minimum components of an interim condensed financial report. The interim condensed financial report shall avoid repetition of information previously reported. In this respect, institution may generally provide less information as compared to the annual financial statements. And instead shall provide an update on the latest complete set of annual financial statements. These updates shall include new activities, events and circumstances only. The interim condensed financial report shall include at a minimum each of the headings and subtotals that were included in most recent annual financial statements. Uh to be honest, at times when we go through the things again and again, something come to our own mind. So there is a question coming to my mind. I'm I'm not having any questions from the audience right now. But right now, I believe that this is a comment that is coming to my mind. Because we are discussing both the standards together. So there is a question that if I'm developing interim condensed set of financial statements. For a for the for the for the conventional entity. Is it necessary for that conventional entity to include? The full set of or the condensed set of financial statements of the Islamic finance window also? It just came to my mind, to be honest. And this is the benefit of having discussions again and again. And I I would like to listen to the participants, what is their view about this? That if I'm 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 having a conventional financial estate institutions interim financial reports. So would it be a requirement or should it be a requirement? To include the interim condensed financials for the window also? Does it add value? Is it is it equally important like the full set? Just something coming to my mind, I would like to listen to very able participants today if something if they have a view on this one. But this something, this is something that came to my mind and this is actually the benefit of having. Uh having these discussions and these reviews and public hearings again and again. Okay, so. I can't see any comment till now, so we'll see if there is a comment on that. Minimum components of the interim condensed financial report and institutions are specifically considered providing information even if considered material qualitatively only. In line with relevant UF FAS with regard to disclosures related to quasi-equity, including investment accounts in line with the requirement of FAS twenty seven. Disclosure related to Al Vakhalab Il Estatmar in line with FAS thirty one. Disclosure related to off-balance sheet investment accounts and other off-balance sheet assets in line with FAS one. Uh disclosures related to profit distribution, disclosures related to Sharia non-compliant income and charity in line with the requirements of FAS one. Disclosure for new Sharia compliant products and services launched during the interim period and a reference new accounting policy or policies adopted for the same. And disclosures related to Zaka in line with the requirements of new standard of Zaka. Effective date of the standard will be one January twenty twenty three. Uh we hope that it will be finalized uh within within the first quarter of uh or twenty twenty two. So we believe that there will be still time for it. Uh and again, all the Islamic financial institutions are mostly already preparing their interim reports. So only thing is that they might need to improve their interim reports in line with the requirements of this standard. So it's a very short, very crisp and very simple standard. I I don't think that there might be too many comments, but if you feel that there should be some important disclosures in the interim that we have missed out. That is one thing that would like to listen to you. And the second thing that would like to listen is if you feel a comment that just came to my mind with regard to. Whether the interim report should include the window, window-related condensed statements or not, this is a question. Uh these are the ques- questions coming to my mind. So any comments on these or any other part of this standard? I can see a quest- a QA tab, brother Adnan Shafi, for interim reporting of Islamic windows may be material. Maybe the materiality concept, that is relative significant can be added or it can be left to regulators. Thank you, brother Adnan. Both both options are good. Both options are good, that we can put either a materiality concept or leave to the regulators. So both of the options are good, we can take it along with this question to the working group and to the board. Any. Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments here? Okay, I cannot see any other comments, so but still we can receive comments in writing from you, all of you are like. Uh uh encourage and requested to provide your comments. For interim, you can provide comments like, you know, maybe in a week or two as well, but for us for the. For the window standard, we need to finalize it as soon as possible because it will be taken to the upcoming board, so if you have any comments, uh we can uh we can. Take comments that we receive in writing within next two days, inshallah, after that it will be difficult for us because towards the end of the month we have. Uh the accounting board meeting and early next month we have the accounting board meeting, so. With that, I would like to thank you all again and. Uh we we can we can we can conclude now, Sister Farida? Uh brother Iswan wants to say something, is brother Iswan?
No, no.
Okay, is there anything that needs to be mentioned, please remind me?
There were few questions.
Comment coming on the Q A tab. Uh brother Mohammed Darwish, I need answers to be written, your answers to be written if you please. Uh brother uh brother Mohammed Darwish, we normally, what we do. We write down all the comments and all the all the comments and some of the answers that are provided by me, again, what answers I provide are actually. Uh I actually based on what was discussed in the working group and the board as secretariat, I'm not. Uh I'm not the person who conclude on these matters, so we take all of your comments. Uh to the to the working group and then to the board. And then they sort out which comments they want to incorporate and which comments they want to ignore. Important comments if they are ignored are added to the basis of conclusion. Uh otherwise, important changes which are suggested by the public hearing participants are incorporated whether in writing or. Uh like in writing or during the public hearings. Uh we are thinking, but we are working with very limited resources, otherwise we are thinking it was part of our strategy project that if possible, we'll try to improve the process of providing. Comments on each of the public hearing comments, but it is honestly, it's the because of very limited resources, we are unable to do that thing. But I can assure you that no comment goes unnoticed, all these comments are noted, these are recorded also, then all of these comments from coming from multiple public hearings then coming from the written comments. Are taken to the working room. Uh any important comments, if they are incorporated or not incorporated, both cases they are taken to the basis of conclusion of the respective standard, so at times you can find out. Your comments there, but to be honest, because of the limited resources, we are unable to actually provide answers to each one of you separately. With that, I think uh we can conclude for today. Uh thank you very much, I can see still more than one hundred participants being there. It was a great session, some very good points that we got for particularly for the window standard, inshallah we'll try to incorporate those points. And we thank you again uh for being being present here and we hope uh that inshallah this continued the continued the interaction with the market. And taking comments from the market will improve eventually the quality of the standard setting at U F I and eventually also the. Uh also the level of adoption and implementation of U F I. Uh or if we finish counting standards in particular, thank you very much, salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.